We're good to go. All right, I want to welcome everyone here to our board meeting study session. It is October first, 2020, 5:30. We're meeting in the boardroom on Legacy Campus in the Professional Development and Technology Building. We'll go ahead and begin with roll call, and we'll start with you, Randall.
Randall Bagley, board member.
Steve Norton, superintendent.
Roger Pulsper, board member.
Kathy Chris-Janson, board member.
Chris Corcoran, board member.
Jeff Nielsen, board member.
Terry Rhodes, board member.
Dale Hanson, business administrator.
And Larry Jepson is excused, and superintendent, will you lead us into pledge, please?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission is to educate for success and educate students for success in a changing world.
Thank you. All right, I doubt there's any public input, but we'll check and see. Okay, all right, we will go ahead then and begin with our reports. And the first one is from Wellsville with Principal Harris on their land trust funds redistribution.
I'm not sure that's on.
And then it takes just a few seconds.
There we go. Good evening.
Hi.
Our community council has a long-term plan to train our teachers in the PLC process of the Solution Tree PLC conference. Over the course of three years, we hope to take a third of the teachers down each year. Last year was our first opportunity to do that. We took about ten staff members to select to that conference, and our plan was to do that again with another third this year. But because of COVID, we'll not be able to attend that conference this year. So we have some money there that we would have spent that we like to readjust. In those same goals, goals two and three of our plan, we also have some money set aside to provide another Chromebook lab. We've learned and you've learned that those have become great tools and important tools. Last spring, when we went to remote learning, we checked out every single one that we had to our patrons. And so, and we also, of course, use them a lot in our classrooms. Anyways, we like to take the money that we would have spent at the conference and then put that off another year. Take the money that we would have spent at the conference and redistribute it to technology to buy a second Chromebook lab with that money. So essentially, we'd take about $8,825 that we would have spent on the conference, $800 for the transportation to that conference, and redistribute that to each of those goals under technology and software. So that's our proposal.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, Birch Creek Elementary and Professor, Professor, Principal Trudy Wilson.
She could be your professor.
Yeah, she could.
Good evening. I'm glad Glenn started because we have the same, had part of the same goals. Same situation, our school Birch Creek Elementary for several years has attended the Solution Tree Conference. That not being possible this year, we would like to reallocate that money to stay still in goal number one, which is working towards math proficiency. We would like to use that for teachers to tutor students before school in some of the deficit skills they're missing in the areas of math.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trudy. And next is Mountainside. And this is Principal Cam, Emma.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you, first of all, for your efforts in allowing us to have our schools open and to have our kids back. It really means a lot, and I thank you so much for your work and that effort. Ours, we're actually not changing any of the money, but we did want to change how we were going to measure our goal this year. It originally read that we were going to use a measurement tool of the RISE 2020 data, and that obviously was not administered, so we would like to change that to read the RISE 2021 data. And then we would also like to amend it, should that not be available, that we will use our Acadia's data based from our fall administration to our spring administration and to see a rise from 69% to 80% benchmark proficiency for our students. So we're not changing any funding, but we just wanted to make an amendment to our measurement system there.
Okay, anyone have questions about that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our health data review.
Seriously, you're gonna walk out on us?
There goes our crowd.
You guys, did they, Emily email you the presentation? Do you all have that available?
It's actually on our agenda.
Is it, did she get it on the agenda? Wonderful. Sorry, I was a little, it's a little hard to type and stuff this week, so I... Don't know if you can remember from last year, but one of the responsibilities I have is to present some health data from the state to you each year with regards to teen pregnancy, child sexual abuse cases, and sexually transmitted diseases and infections. And we went through that data last year. I know COVID has been a strain on our health departments. The sexually transmitted disease and infections data this year is a lot shallower than in previous years. I don't know if that's a result of their resources being used up in COVID. I think they have the data, they just haven't displayed it as nicely. So we're gonna just take a minute and go through that. And I built this presentation this year to be able to compare to the last presentation I did, just so that you have something to compare it to, so you have a context. So if you look at that first slide, Utah adolescent birth data, ages 15 to 19. I pulled the Bear River Health District, which includes the four counties, Rich, Low, Cache, Box Elder, and is that four counties?
No, three counties. Three counties.
Three counties. And so you can see the birth data was, this is per 1,000 females, 13.4 in 2017. That's dropped to 10.9, state of Utah, you can see their averages, and you can see the US averages compared to Utah. So you can kind of get an idea of what that looks like in our own health district. If you flip the page there, the birth rates by race, and we looked a little bit at this last year, but you can see depending on that data, that's all gone down almost across the board in every category between the 2017 and 2019 data. And then if you flip over, they do break the ethnicity down by Hispanic versus non-Hispanic.
Is this for our district or for the state?
No, this is, this is more state data here. Is the 28.4 and the eight for non-Hispanic. And then if you flip to that fourth chart, you can see, I just took, they have a whole chart for small areas, and this is how they reported. I don't really have a choice on how they reported, but they do do a Logan area, Smithfield Cache, which they don't even define that Cache area, North Logan and Hiram. But you can see the difference in those trends over time as well.
So Chris, what's up with North Logan?
It wasn't me.
Wow.
And if you translate the Hispanic versus non-Hispanic, that's a large reason that the Hiram area jumps because of the difference in that demographic for ages 15 to 19 for Utah adolescent birth rates. So that's why that community tracks a little bit higher and relate, and is correlated with the, with the ethnicity. Any questions about any of that data? And this is data that's sent to me by the state. I don't do a lot of interpreting of it. I just kind of try to present it to you in a way that you can kind of make sense of it.
It's just interesting that the trend is downward in every single area except North Logan.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have to talk to Mr. Swenson about that.
So do you use this data for like when you need new school buildings or how you plan for teachers or?
Yeah, I'll show you right at the end of the presentation, kind of some things that we're keen on with it, so, but great question. And then if you notice, I probably had eight or 10 slides last year on sexually transmitted diseases. They didn't, as I said, the data was pretty shallow. This is the total number of cases reported in 2019. And they point out on their slide that this is the highest number of STDs ever reported in Utah this year. Shows you on the next slide that the rate of chlamydia has been steadily increasing, 345.3 cases per 100,000. That's a 19.6% since the 2015 rate. Gonorrhea has gone up 800%. That was reported in, in 2011. I think it's up at 89 or something like that, I saw on another slide. And then 2019 saw a slight decrease when compared with other years, which is about a 2% decrease from the 2018 rate.
Do they have any data as to why? Is it just population growth or?
Well, when you're taking a per 100,000, I don't think they're, they're factoring out for population growth. They're just telling you, yeah, how, how much. And a lot of it's down along the Wasatch front. I mean, there are, it's community-specific. It gets into a community and can be very community-specific. I think cash rates are fairly low in those areas. I didn't include, thanks, Jenda, for standing by, because I probably won't jump to you, but, and I can, I can send you this data. I just got the sex, child sexual abuse data. And the way they report that to us is by county, not by health district, and just by number of cases. So if I had that up on the screen, you'd basically see Cache in 2015 with 54 reported cases, and in 2020 with 82 reported cases. And that's been a steady incline, not a drastic incline, but it's been a steady incline, and that's been that way across the state with child sexual abuse, so. And there's a lot more efforts. We did some training with our staff on trafficking and that type of stuff, just so they're aware that that does go on in our communities. We need to be aware of it as a school system and look for signs and, and those types of things. The last slide I put, well, not the last slide, but the next slide I put in there was, last year you may remember that we reported, we did not have a Health One class in our middle schools until last year. We totally redesigned that class in 1920. It's an excellent class. Goes over some aspects related to this data that we have here. We totally redesigned our Health Two class, approved that data. We're working our way through this year in our adult roles, human development, family studies, and our child development courses. And I will tell you, from Health Two all the way up through these, what's called family and consumer science classes, each one of them has a section that covers STDs, covers birth control, covers all aspects of the data that you're, you're seeing here, how, how to prevent that type of thing from happening, and, and follows the state laws with regards to sex education that we've presented to you before. So we are actively, our teachers go to training. We had a training here in this room this year where we trained all of our, these same group of teachers that teach these courses, made sure they were up to date with the latest information and could respond to questions and things from students. So that was a very productive training day we had with our staff, so. So we do sign assurances every year that we will cover these topics, that we'll train our staff, and, and I think these are very relevant issues to be covering with, with our students. Any questions on any of that data?
I, I don't have any questions, and this is kind of a comment, I guess. I know we like to feel like we're here in a safe area, but I have heard of instances of sex trafficking within families. And so maybe a year or so ago, I was in an airport somewhere and in the, the ladies restroom, back behind every stall door, they had posted a sign with information about sex trafficking. Would our district ever get to the point where we would do posting in school about some of that or not so much?
Yeah, and I'd have to kind of see the postings and what the purpose was of them, but I definitely, I was surprised when I went to the presentation. I, I kind of felt the same way, maybe we don't have this problem here. But it is prevalent. It's prevalent in Utah as it is in other parts of the country. And I think an awareness is the first step to, to working through a problem like that.
The, the sign had a phone number for someone to call if they were in that situation. And then when I was in the Salt Lake Airport and went into the, the ladies restroom, they had just one sign, which is really easy to miss inside, and I just thought, that other idea to me seemed really great, and maybe now's not the time to do it, but I'm just kind of thinking ahead.
No, I, I...
We don't want to be so sheltered, thinking that it never happens because it does.
Right, no, absolutely, yeah. We'll look into that. Kirk Jenkins's group is the ones been working on that with their Project Aware, and we'll certainly bring that to their attention, so. I added on the back of this presentation, since we were talking about he, health data, your recent, most recent update on COVID. So this is, we, I think we had seven or eight active cases last time I presented to you, two weeks ago. That number of 12 that you see on there, that's actually 10, two cases expired yesterday. So we currently have 10 active cases in the school district. And picked up, and the data's changing now. We get daily updates, and we update our staff and our parents weekly on that data so that they can see transparently across all of our schools how many cases we're dealing with and how many students and staff have recovered, so. But we still feel very fortunate. We still haven't had a school transmitted case. So we are investigating one instance right now where we have a teacher and their aide that has both tested positive. That may be our first school transmitted case if that comes back affirmative, so.
I, I think the district is doing awesome on this.
Can I just say thanks to Jenda for the page on the, on the district website?
Yeah, it looks nice.
That COVID page is so great with the resources down the right-hand side and links and all of that stuff, as well as the numbers. That's really great. Thank you.
And she's done a good job too of working with our nurses. On the nurses' side of the COVID pages, it's got a lot more different information, but still relevant. It's very well done as well.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thanks, Tim.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, so the next few topics here, just kind of some discussion with our board on things that have been presented to us, and now we're trying to see how we can implement them or if we want to implement them. And I think, Jeff, you've had a big project to work on, putting all of this together for the strategic plan, but I'll turn the time over to you now.
Okay, I had an opportunity to talk with Tim last week, and we went over the, the goals that the district has and kind of the direction the, the district had. And I think what we've done is incorporate some of the things that we've talked about into this. These goals that he has down here, I believe are, were able to measure those. Maybe the only one that I am still struggling with a little bit was each teacher will ha, will develop digital teaching and learning competencies. I'm not sure how to measure that, but the other three goals, we have the ability to measure. And so I think that's important. In the past, maybe there's been some goals that we haven't really been able to assign a metric to. It was more of a feel-good thing. But we can go through each of these goals, or if you want, you can review them and provide input. I'm not sure if you want to, how much discussion we want to have here on it, or?
Let's go. What, what do you think? How do you want to do this? I'd kind of like to go through the goals so we talk about it.
Okay, sounds good.
So is everybody good with that?
Okay, so, and, and understand that for the academic goals, you can see down below the, what the targets are. Now, you can see the state targets, and Tim explained to me that, you know, we, Cache County, for the most part, we've been able to excel a little more than the state, and so we, we're trying to shoot high there. And so the, the targets are set different than the, the state targets. But those are there for a comparative reference. So on the academic side, it said each elementary student will be reading on grade level by the end of third grade as evidenced by their third grade literacy scores see below. And this is, so you can see what the goal is, and that's something that we can measure. Secondary students will be both confident and competent in mathematics as they transition from our secondary schools to college and career pathways as evidenced by their math proficiency scores and ACT scores. And those are also referenced below. So how do you feel about that, that first goal, the academic one?
What do you think, Roger?
I like it. I think it looks good.
So this last line that 2018, oh, that's what we were at in 2018. Okay. Oh, gotcha. Okay, I think I got this chart figured out now. Anybody have any discussion, questions, concerns on the academic goal?
So the only things that matter are math and secondary and literacy scores in third grade.
No. That's never, yeah, lots of other things that matter.
A parent reading that would say that.
Yeah, it would be pretty broad to get into every subject level and lots of what we don't measure. I've got a document here from the state, which is a new competency-based framework with about 10 more competencies like civic, financial, economic, literacy, creativity and innovation, collaboration, which are great. I mean, they've done a lot of work on these, but measuring them and making it quantifiable is going to be a large lift for the state to try to figure out how to work that down through 40 school districts. Instead of, of course, the CTE areas, the career and technical areas, they have competencies built into them. Very good student tests at the end of each of those courses. I can speak on that, and I can't about this. And we do kind of work towards competencies in those courses. But often your trust alliance plans, your PSSA plans, when they say they focus on academics, what they're really focusing on is math, science, and reading and writing, because that's what we have tested in the state traditionally.
So on the Utah Board of Education's strategic plan for early learning or learning, they just have each student starts strong through early grades with a foundation in literacy and numeracy. So there's this kind of geared towards the same two emphasis on those two subjects. Do you want it to be different, Terry?
No.
Well, you are right. Someone could ask, pose that question.
I understand where it comes from.
Okay.
And, and it makes sense. But it, it, a, a parent reading that who doesn't have a third grader, has a fourth, fifth, or sixth grader, would think, so what's my kid chopped liver?
So I wonder if we moved like the mission statement and the vision statement more to the top, because that, those are both a little more overall. So you have that background, our mission is to educate students for success in a changing world. And then all students will be prepared to succeed and lead by having the knowledge and skills to learn, engage civically, and lead meaningful lives would be up there, and then our specific goals at this time.
I think that makes sense to move those up there. Yeah, that'd look better.
Okay.
Because it's also too overwhelming to try and put specific goals for every single grade.
Yes, it is.
And, and I get that. I'm just saying what I've heard.
It might be enough to just add a preamble to the metric where, where you just say simply, among other measurable goals, we will accomplish this or something like that, so that you, that people realize that these are not the only, you know, objectives that the, that the district has.
Right.
I like that, too, with a little more explanation before saying this isn't all we're working on, but this is what our main focus would be.
One of the things I've always liked about superintendent's literacy goals is it's been kind of eloquent to just say, we want to reach every elementary level by the end. We were treating the district with a lot of resources and a lot of effort behind that, and we have four years left in the entire state. I mean, you see the state's target for 2022 is 65.5. Our results already are 83%. So we've been marching up that pathway at a much steeper incline than the state, and it's all resource-driven, and, and personnel and, and financial resources that the board put into serving those kids. And we know from a lot of research that if the student reaches a grade level by the end of year three, we've set them up for success for the rest of their educational experience.
Well, and to that point, you know, what you're trying to accomplish by third grade makes it possible for fourth grade and fifth grade to be successful, you know, that's the, go ahead, Gary.
I was just gonna say, there were so many goals in K1, 2, to get to that goal in third grade. And then you're exactly right, Jeff. We've got some preliminary data that we've done ourselves based on our, we just finished with our first, but you guys probably have known them in the past, the GIBBS test, it's now the Acadia's test. We just got to all 17 schools. We're still wrapping up our online gives with that. But we have some preliminary data there with that reading. We were concerned about the summer slide, which is really a, since March slide this year. So it's got a three-month, you know, window of opportunity to slip, six months. Very interesting preliminary data with that. Our younger kids, we're seeing first, second, third, yes, the, the gap between where those kids were last year, same grade level, you know, our third graders are lower, our second graders are lower. But when you get up in our fourth, fifth, and sixth, by sixth grade, we're actually not even seeing a dip in those scores. And I think it goes back to, if you build that foundation in reading so solid, you don't see that slide, that summer slide, or in this case, the COVID slide, even twice the amount of time. Those kids are still, matter of fact, they were up two points higher than the previous year just with our initial six weeks of school. So if we can get that foundation in those early grades, it really does make a difference for the rest of their lives. And that's where that third grade is such a key point to, to measure from. That's where we start to transition our curriculum from learning to read to reading to learning.
And, and we all understand this.
Right.
That, that this is, this is data-driven, and that's why, that's why this district puts their money there. And, and not just in third grade, but how can we say that so that more student, it looks, so it, so that more students are included or that it explains?
Probably in a preamble, like my role said, that we can just explain what he just said, if we can build this foundation.
I mean, we don't want to make it a lot longer, but, but we need to make it look like we care about more kids than third grade reading and math.
Can I suggest maybe another modification based on what Gary just said? Instead of calling it a third grade test, call it, you know, a, an elementary benchmark or something. So that you're not, you're not, yeah, in other words, you're not being specific to the grade. It's reflecting a cumulative effect across grades, but, but that benchmark, I mean, we know is measured at a particular time in, in the progress, but, but, but in other words, you're, you're kind of reflecting the, you know, that, that interaction, you know, from grade to grade that's really key. So, so take away the grade at which the benchmark is measured and just...
So take away the grade at which the benchmark is measured and just call it a benchmark. But, you know, find something more broad to distinguish those benchmarks.
So you're saying use the same metric, but maybe it's not called the third grade literacy check.
Yeah, just call it like the.
Elementary benchmark.
Something like that, yeah. Yeah, that would be a good way of.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody?
Early, middle literacy, mid-literacy, high school literacy, or something like that.
Okay.
And that may, I mean, I can see, just play the flip side of that, like, okay, early literacy, when are you doing that one? In order to compare it to the state, to compare it across any others, they're going to want to know at what point did you take that snapshot? You know, so I don't know. I can see both sides.
Right, well, we could leave the third grade literacy thing on the, on the.
The goal itself.
No, on the.
On the chart, a chart.
The chart and put the early literacy benchmark up in the, up in the goal. Because we all know the specifics of that, but I like the idea of the preamble that because we're so focused on the early literacy benchmark and getting most of our kids there, it creates success for them for the rest of their lives.
Okay.
Okay, well, wordsmith the preamble and.
Okay.
That's really the essence of that second goal with math. Again, we were trying to say this eloquent and specifically laid out is third grade literacy, which is this is really his language to be of course, a little bit, that if every kid finishes secondary, we'll be confident and competent in mathematics. And that sets the stage so much for the career paths that they choose when they go into this post-secondary level. I mean, some of my kids didn't, you know, chose more of a social science pathway and some chose science pathways, but I was certainly glad that they had the foundation to be confident and competent in that when they go to post-secondary. So it weren't at a disadvantage.
Right, it gives them, it just opens more doors. Gives them more choices in post-secondary.
Okay, so Jeff, are you good with this now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I know where to move forward.
Okay, second one.
Okay, each new teacher will be assigned an instructional coach and will receive three years of support to implement evidence-based teaching practices.
These three goals are kind of what I would call upstream goals. I mean, they lead to academic achievement, but we believe they're critical to, I think, the instructional coaching piece that we've done laid out the last four or five years. It's been probably one of the most consequential things we've done in the district for a long time. We can guarantee every new teacher that comes to the district, whether they're just new to our district or new to the profession, get kind of taught the cash way, and this is how we do things in cash with regards to curriculum and academic excellence and instruction. And so it doesn't have, we make sure every teacher goes through and has an instructional coach, but we don't really, and they go through a whole coaching cycle, and they get videotapes and they go through all of those things, but they're not a metric necessarily, other than every teacher gets that same opportunity, that same level of coaching.
Anybody have concerns over that? I actually like that. I just, everybody, okay. All right, digital teaching and learning.
Okay, so each teacher will develop digital teaching and learning competencies, and students will have access to blending, blended learning opportunities that support and extend learning beyond the classroom.
And so how do we measure that one?
I can tell you, Jeff, you had a question on that earlier.
Yeah.
So I have a new digital teaching and learning special standard part of the district. Is, in fact, these kind of whole quotes already started to flow out, of course, we're going to build, basically we're going to have competency for every, every aspect of the digital tools that we use. And we're looking at either doing some badging or some professional development points for teachers, or something they put on their resume and say, okay, I'm CANDO certified, I'm Google certified, and I built this list of competencies that the school district sees are important to me to have as a teacher be successful in supporting learning for students, either in classroom experience or blended experience or full online experience. So that's probably, if we move faster on that goal in the last six months, and surely for season's next goal, is all of a sudden that became paramount that our teachers have those skills to be able to be kind of ambidextrous a little bit.
Yeah.
So we need more verbiage on that.
Yeah, I think, I think we will do some verbiage on that, but I like that, Tim, what you've got. This was the one I was struggling with because I didn't know how to measure it. And then finally, on the safe and healthy schools, each school will have access to counseling and mental health supports. And help me remember, Tim, what we talked about on that one. Everyone has a counselor, right, or access?
Most of the first year in many years that we will have a counselor at every single school, school district. And you've mentioned the project aware that Kirk Jacobs is running this. That's what the mental health counselors, social work counselors, our social workers in our schools, that's made huge dividends. We hired a new behavior coach to work with our general population, that's Alan Jack this year. He's got a phenomenal career path, so it's just ramping up those services. Like I can tell you, if you talk to most of our counselors and teachers, they have seen those kinds of resources that are level that we're providing them for many years. So we're just trying to make sure we have that coverage across all twenty-five of our schools.
So do we need more verbiage to explain that a little bit in that goal? I think that would be good. So, but it's known, we, this is what we're striving for, this is what, we hope to have that many people in each school.
It's a hard one to put a metric to.
Well, could you just do it by, there will be a counselor in every school and a social worker in, or whatever?
Well, and I think it, you know, it says each school will have access to, right, a counselor, so I think.
So it says that.
I think that's good. So as far as the breadth of the goals, does everybody feel good about that? I thought it was, that they had good breadth, too. Okay, do you want to keep going, Kathy, or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So the vision, all students will be prepared to succeed and lead by having the knowledge and skills to learn, engage civically, and lead meaningful lives.
Good.
That's really the state.
It's a state of Utah, and so there's nothing we can do to.
Yeah, I would say move these up to the top and put the mission statement first.
Okay.
And then the vision statement.
Okay. Now Kathy had a proposal for our mission statement.
Well, it's just one that I read off of something Jenda sent me.
Uh, let's see. Our vision is to provide an educational experience that challenges each student to achieve his or her highest potential as a citizen and a learner.
So it's a vision statement instead of a mission statement?
Yes.
Oh, I think that's awesome. That's one line instead of three paragraphs.
Well, yeah, so do we want the state vision, then our mission, and then our vision? Would we do that on this?
I think if you want somebody to actually read this paper, no. Because you'll lose them by the third one of rhetoric.
Well, we could have just our vision statement.
Yeah, that's what I think we should do. I think we should have our vision statement. And it basically says what the state vision says, just worded a little bit differently. All right, so you'll get that?
Yep.
Okay. All right, carry on here.
Okay, so the strategies to make these things, these are the strategies to support the goals. Academic support strategies, promote high-quality explicit instruction in every classroom. Provide evidence-based curriculum implemented with fidelity. Support database decision-making and provide time for professional learning communities and collaboration.
I like it. Anybody have an objection?
I like them.
Okay.
All right, for teacher excellence, continue practices to attract and hire the best teachers possible for our classrooms. Provide every new teacher with three years of instructional support and coaching, which that backs up the goal explicitly. Provide professional development opportunities for existing teachers in best teaching and learning practices.
Any objections or adjustments? So maybe we don't need to say how many counselors or whatever, because you've got it in this part. Okay.
Yeah, this is, yeah, like I said, this supports the goals. And then, safe and healthy schools, provide counseling and mental health support in each school. Promote evidence-based student health and wellness practices.
Any comments, questions, concerns? Okay.
And then finally, the new initiatives to help further these, these goals and to be forward-thinking. New math curriculum grades K through six to help support numeracy and variety grades. New reading curriculum grades two through six to help improve reading and writing outcomes. New math curriculum grades seven through eleven to promote confidence and competence in mathematics.
By the way, all three of those are, we want to top them a year, we're a year into it. The next one, the second call, that's for the first year, this is year one, we're adopting curriculum there for education base. And then the new math, it is, did high school last year, or in the first year of middle school implementation. So all of those, and we probably invested, you know, about a million dollars in those curriculum and in training our staff so far, and that's kind of unfolding aspects, so.
Okay.
That's good. Okay. New five-year digital teaching and learning grant to support effective mathematics instruction in secondary schools. And then finally, new digital teaching and learning specialist hired to support developing teacher competencies surrounding blended learning.
So comments on this? Did you want to say something, Tim?
I think that DTL grants about five hundred and forty-six dollars a year for five years, so that's a two and a half million dollars a day range.
So I'm, in the way I'm looking at it, this kind of takes care of the first one where you had questions about all grades, because it does tell what's happening in all the grades as far as the, the math and the reading go. Is that right?
Well, yeah, it does.
Yes, but you don't see it on the, on the front.
So, okay, so you still like the idea of being a little more specific or detailed on the front?
I think the preamble will help take care of all that.
Well, yeah, the preamble could say, read to the end.
Yeah.
And what did you want to say?
Well, I think I would just add one, I think in deference to your concern, I think there ought to be some statement in here about our support of the arts, because we do have a tremendous art program, and we really don't mention it. That would, that would help, I think, to ease a lot of concern with a parent who, who is, wants their kids to go down that track. And there's some language we could put in here very easily.
Yeah. Okay, got that down.
Good suggestion. Okay, and moving on.
All right, finally, the safe and healthy schools initiatives, develop a school reopening plan for the two thousand, or sorry, 2021 school year to support enhanced hygiene, cleaning, cleaning and teaching practices during the pandemic. Develop K through twelve online option for families. Hire health aides or increased hours across all twenty-five schools. And increase access to counselors so that every school has at least one full-time counselor.
Comments about this one?
It's all stuff that's been done.
Yeah, so what about all of the other safe things that were done prior to COVID-19? Like each school have, will have a safety school plan or?
Yeah, there's been a lot of work done in that area as well, just around school drills and those types of things. It's, it's, we've done, put that new alert system in schools across the valley.
So I feel like there should be one more bullet just pertaining to that type of safety, that that's, that's something we're concerned about, and we're going to be working on it.
Can do that.
Okay, anything else anybody wants to add to this?
Is this a document we're going to revisit every year?
I think so, yeah.
If so, then it doesn't need to be, I mean, we don't need to try and include everything. Because if we're going to revisit it every year, then we can be year-specific.
But if this is your base document and you're, and you've got it all, I think it would, if you put those other items on there, that would at least focus your attention on to them.
I agree with that.
So it doesn't have to be much, because I, what you don't want to do is create a document that nobody wants to spend time with it because it's too, too complicated and too detailed. This is not there. What I'm trying to say is just don't put, just don't get it to that category.
Okay, Randall, do you have any comments on this you want to put in before we cut? Roger?
No.
Chris?
No. Oh, just the notes I've taken for.
Okay. Good job. Oh, this is awesome.
Well, this is all Tim.
Well, good job, Tim, Jenda, Gary, whoever's been working on it. This is great.
I just, I just talked to them.
Yeah, you still, these numbers, you still, there's a lot of work that has to be on, plus Stephen here on paper.
Yeah. But this is an overview for our patrons to see, here's kind of where our focus has been, is, and where we hope to plan for in the future.
If you take this document and then combine it with the school, the district report card, you should cover everybody's desire to know anything they want to know about what's going on academically, emotionally, safety-wise in our school district, so it's, it's good.
Well, what it should do is help us stay focused on what we said is important.
Yeah, as we're passing policies and so forth. Okay, so how do you want to handle this from here? Do you want more time to discuss? Do you want?
Uh, let's do the one more round, one more iteration here, and then we'll see if we get to the.
Do you want to do it next meeting or wait till the first of November?
I think, what do we, we've got two weeks. I don't know.
No, you have three this month.
No.
Because of fall break.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, that's right. Will that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was wondering, I haven't developed this with those aspects on the chart, and I'm still trying to figure out how the state's measuring readiness coursework. I put the last year down there, but how many of our kids finished concurrent enrollment in eighth and classes? Which gives you pretty good indication of where their thinking is. Our district did get mentioned last year for having more minority of women in upper-level college courses in high school, so that was nice. But I'd like to, I don't know if by readiness coursework the state's talking about, you know, four years of English, three years of math, three years of science. That's not the reading and teaching scholarship that are ready for this coursework. So I got to do a little more research in that area, because I think that is important as well as the mathematics. It's just, are we giving, getting, thinking about, because education doesn't stop at the high school diploma. About taking that next step in life towards post-secondary education. And we're building the coursework early on that will not discriminate on minorities or for women as they go through the system, going into some of those career pathways that they maybe have traditionally gone after.
So wouldn't it be good then to include the tech pathways? Kids who are pathway completers, like through B tech?
I just wanted to make sure I knew what the state meant when they had their target of eighty-seven percent. I wanted to know the metrics. I couldn't find that anywhere on their site. What they're using for their metrics of what is eighty-seven percent readiness coursework? I got to get a definition for what they're defining readiness coursework.
Right, I'm just thinking that your, your statement about the graduating class. Concurrent enrollment and AP credits are important to some students, but not all, and so.
But you're absolutely, yeah, the bridge or learn courses.
So the pathway completers, I know that that's a big deal at Cache High Graduation.
Yep.
And it should be more of a big deal at our other four high schools, because there are lots of kids who go on to be very successful in life who don't use concurrent enrollment or AP credits necessarily to further themselves after high school.
Yeah, correct. You're absolutely right. And I think that's, I think that the state's readiness coursework's got to include more than concurrent and AP. It's the only, it's the only measure I had, though, so.
Okay, all right, well, here are the updates then in three weeks. Okay, thank you, both of you. That's awesome. All right, and next is Chris to tell us the community engagement ideas that he has come up with.
This is a compilation of some ideas that we talked about previously, and also some that you. and also, um, some that you, I, I think that you sent to Kathy, is that right?
Oh, it's the same handout. And I, I think you sent it to me a long time ago, but I finally read it and it had some good ideas on it, so, and I just remembered that idea.
So, something from Jenda, there were a few from Kathy, a couple from me. So, it's just a sprinkle of, um, brainstorming ideas. And some of them are probably better than others, so I, I just put them all down here for your consideration. I mean, the, the, the goal is to increase community engagement. And some of these, I think that, you know, some of these, I, I think we already do a decent job of, like, for example, recognize the contributions and achievements of staff and students at every opportunity. I feel like, you know, the district does a very good job with that. I, I, I think that, you know, in, in light of what we talked about at our previous meeting, I think it's good to focus on ways to help, uh, people in the community, stakeholders, to understand, uh, the decision-making process. Because I, I, I think what happens is that they feel like there are decisions that are made in a black box. And so, when, when that happens, I think anybody feels like their voice, you know, is, is diminished. And so, there are a few on here that I think are worth considering, and, um, you know, we don't have to spend a huge amount of time on this tonight. But one that I thought was interesting was turn information and facts into a story. That was one of the ones that was on your list. And, and I think that, um, you know, through the website, I think that, uh, Jenda does a fairly good job of making sure that, um, that these stories are told. It might be useful for us to consider, you know, after, after more significant decisions are made, to craft a narrative, you know, that's on the website as a point of reference so that if people have questions about decisions that were made, funding decisions, or disciplinary or whatever, or about disciplinary policy, I mean, that those narratives are on the website, so we can just use that as a frame of reference for the future. And, uh, recognize and validate parent groups like PTA and SCCs, invite them to board meetings. I think that's an outstanding idea, you know. Kathy suggested that we put PTA on the agenda a couple of times a year, for example. And, and I, I, there are lots of ways that that could happen, but you could invite members from particular schools to certain meetings, or, um, if, particularly if we talk about something that's relevant maybe to them. And so, I, I, I like that idea because I think, um, you know, the ideas that are, uh, I, I should, should I say, kind of low effort, you know, would require not very much organization, but might have a high impact or always the best, and, and I think that's one. I, I, you know, support parent volunteer opportunities. I, you know, my, my sense is that volunteerism, the rate is pretty high, you know, in our district, just from what I've observed. I don't know if there's a way to measure that. But one that would require some investment, but one that I think would, would result in perhaps some long-term payoff would be to have roundtable discussions where we invite people specifically, and we have people from the district with expertise in a certain area, like, like, for example, taxation or something. And, and instead of having the public input, um, the typical public input part of the meeting, which, which obviously serves a purpose and is, is mandated, you know, but at the same time, it sometimes inhibits actual discussion. So, if we have, if, if we include a roundtable discussion every once in a while about, you know, issues that I think the public feels strongly about, like, you know, for example, should the districts be combined? Or, you know, or, or issues having to do with taxation just for educational purposes or to help people understand how decisions are made. A discussion about curriculum, you know, like, e- either at the primary school level or the secondary school level. I, I think, I, I think we take for granted that we, you know, understand a lot of these issues, but I just think a lot of people, a lot of, of parents and voters and so on, just don't understand some of these things. And so, to host some of these, where instead of just kind of saying, "We're putting this on the agenda" and putting out a public notice and hoping that people show up, we actually specifically invite people, you know, to, to join in on that. They may be people that we feel tend to be more active in their communities, and so, that, that can have a multiplicative effect as they go back and share that information with other people. It may be people who have, you know, written emails to the district before, and, you know, or, or people who tend to be prolific in their communications with the district. And so, we reward them kind of by maybe including them in on a discussion like that. That, that might take a little bit of an organization, but I think, I actually think the payoff would be, um, would be significant there as well. So, that, those are my reflections on this list, but.
Okay.
If there are any other comments.
Yeah, any other comments on this?
Nice work.
So, um, how would the board suggest we move forward on this? Or, Chris, what's your idea as far as taking one of these and working on it this year, or?
I, I think that maybe we could just pilot a couple of these ideas this year. You know, like, for example, inviting, uh, a, a few community councils. I mean, we, we clearly have the capacity to invite a few community councils or a few PTAs to come and craft the agenda so that we talk about something that's relevant to them that day. We could pilot that, that would not take a lot of effort. And we could also pil- pilot a roundtable discussion, just, you know, in consultation with the district, we, we could talk about something that, you know, get, get, gets people excited, you know, one way or the other to talk about. And, you know, one, one issue in the spring might be, uh, you know, we've got a long road ahead of us as far as COVID goes, but if in the spring, things still seem like they're relatively contained, it might be interesting to have a kind of a, um, uh, kind of a, a sort of a recap discussion about things that went well, things that didn't, or something like that. I mean, those are things that I think people in the public would be interested in talking about.
So, um, we're planning to do, like, a, um, a meeting at one of the schools in the south. Would this be a time when you could see maybe their PTA while they're meeting at that school? Have a place on the agenda where they kind of talk about what's going on in their school? Or are you thinking something different? Yeah?
Oh, I, I actually, I, I like the idea of going out and visiting schools, but I also like the idea of having people come here to this room, you know, and, and to, to meet here where these school board meetings happen.
Okay.
Um, I, I think, I think both, uh, both directions would, would actually benefit, uh, the public in terms of our engagement with them.
Okay.
I mean, the PTAs, they, they, and, and, uh, community councils, they meet in their schools all the time. But, but to, to get more people into this room so that they feel like they, they know where it is, they know where we're meeting, you know, they, they have a sense for what we discuss, the more we can do that, I think, the more.
Ownership.
The more that the, the public will buy into, you know, the district and the board and, and, and what, what we do and what our goals are.
Okay. If it's okay with the board, then, I'll just kind of keep this list and work with Chris, and we'll see what we can come up with in the future, if that'll sound okay? Okay. Teacher employee recognitions and board visibility ideas, Randall, was going to.
Yeah, I got a few ideas here, and Kathy, sorry, as I was looking at it, I see a few typos and misprints. I hope you don't cringe too much here, so. I thought I should have ran it by you through.
I'm giving up that.
I didn't, I didn't even run it by my wife here, so.
Does anybody have a red pen?
Better have a lot of ink in it, so. So, anyway, these are a few ideas here. I wanted to talk about currently ways we're recognizing our teachers and staff. Uh, these are some of the more prominent ways we do that. We, each teacher does a Teacher of the Year, and they're recognized here at a board meeting, they're given a plaque. And Jenda does a great job getting their name up on our Facebook page. I see a lot of teachers there with our, uh, picture, with us next to them, and I think that's great. And I know most schools, I don't know if all of them, but a lot of them will put their names on a plaque each year. We'll list their Teacher of the Year, I think that's a great thing to do. Just last meeting, we recognized our district Teacher of the Year. That's also done at a board meeting, they're recognized. Murdoch does a great job of, uh, giving a one-year lease. I know I've talked to recipients in the past, and they just say how wonderful that is to get a lease of a car for a year. And they're also recognized on the Facebook page. One thing I wasn't that familiar with, I know some of you probably more of than I am, and that's what the Cash Education Foundation does. They award a Hats Off Recognition Award. And that, it includes a cash award of five hundred dollars, a plaque, a Hats Off lapel pin. They're presented this award in front of their students and peers, which is a nice way to honor them. And they're also recognized in the media. And, uh, last year, in two thousand twenty, there were twenty-two teachers that were awarded this aw- award. And there's probably other ones I'm not familiar with, uh, those were the main ones I came up with. I didn't get much feedback from board members on ideas, we can recognize them. These were a few, uh, the few I did get. Someone mentioned a short sixty-second ad on the radio to express appreciation to our education community, or maybe a newspaper, half-page or full-page ad expressing appreciation. Uh, other things that people do, gift cards, and I know our, our district's great about giving gift cards. I, I think our district does a great job of recognizing and appreciating the staff. And I know I look at this environment, I thought, wow, a lot of times, I'm kind of envious of the way that, uh, our district does. I know superintendent does a great job of, uh, recognizing and appreciating teachers. Time off, professional del- development, and classroom supplies were some of those that were mentioned. And I, uh, sent an email to a few people I know who are teachers. I asked them their ideas on the way that staff and teachers can be better, uh, recognized and appreciated. I didn't get a ton back, but I did get a few comments. I got this one back, it says, "It is a tough, busy year, kids have a lot on their plate, and that gives us more to worry about. It is hard to know what can be done to make it easier. Are there typical yearly administrative minutiae that you can remove and make our dealing with student problems and COVID the evaluated criteria for the year?" That was one teacher's comment. Another one, he says, "Principal Dave Swenson at Green Canyon is very good at making teachers feel appreciated. He may have some good ideas." And, uh, and so, that's what I have. If, uh, anyone knows of anything they want to add to that, of ways to recognize our teacher, or ways that, uh, things I'm missing, how we recognize them?
Randall, you didn't put mine on there, to recognize when they have had, when they have, um, taught a thousand students, or ten thousand students.
Oh, yeah, you, yeah, yeah, you mentioned that at the meet, you, you didn't email it to me, that was the problem, sorry.
I thought I said it enough times in the meeting that it was ingrained.
Yeah, Terry had a good one, as soon as they had a thousand students, recognize them then, yeah, that was, yeah, that's right.
So, that would be like for, um, middle school teachers, uh, after about four years?
Is it?
Yeah.
Is it, wow.
Because they do, some of them that have six or seven classes with thirty students in, um, that's a hundred and eighty. Oh, I guess it'd take a little bit longer now. But some of the teachers I taught with, they had about two hundred and fifty students some years.
I, I know some organizations, once they get a certain amount of years, ten years, twenty years, they'll give them some type of award or prize. Does the district do that?
We don't.
You don't do that, okay.
Yeah.
I think that'd be a good thing to do. Longevity, you know, five years, ten, fifteen, you know, just something that they would feel like they were recognized.
Do we recognize the teachers when they cross the line from provisional to tenured?
Not with any formal, uh, that's the school, the, the individual schools are doing some, the district doesn't.
Yeah. We do have bump-ups on the salary schedule for teachers at twenty and twenty-five years, or twenty-eight.
Well, those are, but those are invisible. I mean, they're real, they're real, but they're invisible to the general public. And invisible to us, because we don't know who they are. You do.
So, um, as a, the head of the district, does this sound like way too much stuff to be doing or thinking about if we chose maybe one or two things?
No, we can, we can, we can, we'll look at this and see if we can come up with a couple of ways. Probably no more than two.
Yeah.
To add in a given year.
So.
Like, we can look at areas.
I actually like the idea, even though there's not a whole lot of people that see the newspaper or listen to the radio, I do like the idea of getting it out in the public somewhat with an ad or, um, something on the radio.
Yeah, I, I, I think the, the public for the generation that, because the kids we're raising is social media.
It'd have to be Instagram.
Yeah.
For it to really be a recognition for them.
Or Twitter.
Yeah.
Not TikTok.
Yeah.
I, I'm just saying, that's their, that's, that's your radio in print, our radio in print.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
So, do you have one, Randall, that you particularly thought?
Well, another one I didn't list it here, I, I, I just thought about it recently, but as we award, give these plaques out to, uh, Teachers of the Year, I thought, you know, if we just came and everybody signed a card on the school board and just gave that with them, too, I think, you know, that would be a simple thing to do, and we might have to write our name three or four times. But if someone would be willing to initiate that, you know, just bring a card, and along with their plaque, just give it, uh, a thing that each of the school board members signed. I think that might be some way that we could show our appreciation to the teachers.
That would definitely make it more personal.
Yeah, and it'd be easy to do, so.
So, I'm not trying to create more work, work from the district, but I am trying to, like Terry mentioned, make it more visible from us, so that you don't have to do the work, we do it. So, I like that idea. Should we try and do that one? So, now they're not, we're not really recognizing the teachers here at the board meeting, correct, this year because of COVID? So, how is that happening?
No, we.
We're gonna do it?
Yeah, we'll.
Okay, just limit, how many can come, or?
Uh, we'll just, yeah, we'll just limit the number that we will be here.
They're no closer here than they are in their classrooms.
True. Okay, so, Randall, would you be in charge of getting the cards ready?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
I'll get them here, and, uh, as long, I'll try to keep track and find out, uh, will this, now, I'd like to kind of know the schedule of what they're doing, so.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Like, when they started?
We have that.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'd be happy to do that, so.
Okay, just follow through, so you get the information, and then you know when the cards are, have them here, get us to sign them. Does that sound good?
Can I just, uh, ask one quick question, or just make a comment? Uh, you know, what Larry said in the last meeting about, you know, we, we have a few people on this board, obviously, who have, you know, been teachers in, in public school. What Larry said, I think, um, was, was something that kind of resonated with me. You know, he talked about what he felt like made him feel valued as a teacher. And I would just suggest, you know, uh, you know, as, as we consider what, what will make teachers feel most valued, I, I think, you know, for example, Randall, you had the comment on here that Dave Swenson, you know, was very good at recognizing, you know, his, his teachers. I think it would just be a great idea to spend some time, before we shotgun, you know, too much confetti at teachers without really understanding what, what will help them to feel valued, to just maybe ask, you know, spend some time asking teachers.
As I remember Larry, and, and we, we all know that, that the most valued, uh, recognition comes from those who are closest to you. So, it's easier for a principal to have that closer relationship. But I, but I think there's still room for things that happen at the district level. And one of the things that, that, uh, I think that we could do that would make, uh, the teachers that we recognize here on a, on a school ride basis is, they just get a plaque. I, I think a little monetary reward would, would make that much more valuable and appreciate, appreciated by the, by the teachers, and I've always wanted to do that. And, and this, this statement at the bottom about how tough a year, we just finished visiting all four of the high schools on a plain and simple listening tour, where we brought them into the auditorium and said, "Tell us what's going on." And that's pretty much encapsulated. They are, they are really overworked, exhausted. I wouldn't say discouraged, but they're, they're just, they can't see an end to this, and. And, and there's just no way that anybody can tell them when it's going to end. So I think this is a great year to focus on these types of things.
I, I totally agree. And I, I think maybe to connect this to the engagement of the board with the community, but to connect the board to the teachers. You know, based on what Larry said in that last meeting, it might be a good idea. We could do that in addition to recognizing them in this meeting, but it would be a good idea for us maybe to go to the schools and to, and to recognize them, you know.
Especially the schools that are in your area, so it's not, I mean, I, it's awful hard for everybody to be at everything. So if you were to just take the schools that you're with, and we'd go and do the same presentation at, at some place there, yeah. This is a year where we've really got to do, think out of the box and try to figure out how to, how to just keep the.
So are you thinking, still do the presentation here, but then do something extra, like at an assembly at their school?
Just show up to their class in front of their peers and their students.
They're not having assemblies.
Oh, that's right.
But, but, but show up there in their class in front of their kids, in front of their, you know.
I think that's great. That's, that's, hats off does that, and they get some wonderful responses. It's, it's, the people, the business people who go out on hats off, really enjoy that experience. And, and many of them come back year after year, just to be there to see what a five-hundred-dollar check does to the life of a teacher, so.
As difficult as this year is, it feels like we need to recognize more teachers in small ways. I mean, I appreciate that we are, that we do the teacher of the year. And, and I like the idea of going to the school to present that to, to them in their class. But that's one teacher in each school, and I feel like we need to do more as a board. I don't know how unless we can implement some of Randall's ideas.
And I, I think we need to remember, you know, the custodial staff and the cooks and the other staff too, because, boy, they're overworked too, so.
It's, it's all the way through the system. So this is a good topic.
It's a good topic, and we need to probably revisit, yeah. And thank you, Randall, for putting these ideas together. So let's start with the cards at the presentation from us. Let's think of how we can get into the schools to give them their monetary award. And in fact, that we can present with a monetary award. And, yeah, this is great. It's good to have a discussion on this. Thanks. So Terry, I forgot to put on here, it looks like, about you just kind of updating us on what you found out so far about the meeting out at the north end of the valley.
It's under board committee report.
Yeah, it's under your board committee report.
Okay.
You did put it on.
Thank you. Okay, so let's do that.
I, I did, and I am really glad that Jeffrey is here in the back of the room. He is actually a dad from White Pine Elementary. He has three, three daughters? Three daughters there. Cute girls. And he attends almost all of the PTA meetings and the school community council.
Wow.
Meetings there. And so I was chatting with him and a couple of other parents and the principal when I was at White Pine after their school community council meeting last week. And they were, when I mentioned the idea of having a couple of board members participate in the school board meeting remotely from a school, they were all excited about it. So it would be White Pine, not Lewiston. And I would suggest that we do it on not the nineteenth, which is a regular voting board meeting, but during a study session. So maybe on the fifth of November instead of the nineteenth. I reached out to Tim, because who else do we all reach out to when we have to do hard things? That are techie. And he is going to work on the technical, just the logistical side of setting everything up there to make sure that that's possible from White Pine. And, and Shelley Healy said she would advertise and invite some specific parents to be there. So we just need to decide what topic we would like them to discuss in one of your round, sort of a mini roundtable? Or something like that. It's too bad it's not in, or it's in November, so we couldn't talk about the change, the constitutional change coming up on the ballot initiative, because this will be after that, but.
Have a discussion on the ramifications of it, and a little bit of school finance. I, I'm just suggesting that no matter which way that thing goes, the public needs to know.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I think it's a great topic.
Okay, okay. So I'm willing to go to be remote at White Pine if we can make the logistics work for this. Is there anyone else who wants to go with me? Probably only two of us can go. I'm happy to go by myself. I go there all, by myself all the time.
I'd be happy to go if.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great, because I can't.
Be president.
Okay. All right, so we'll kind of work out the details on, on that. And are you thinking the discussion would start from here, or would be one of you, probably you, Terry, where you are very informed on the finances?
Well, yeah, I can do that, and most of the parents we would invite to that meeting have seen that finance presentation with the little circle graph. And so they do know some things about that, so we could have that discussion there. But I just picture the meeting being like a Zoom meeting with all of us on a screen, and we would just be remote from, I mean, everyone would be here except Chris and I, and we would be out there. And they have, the district provided four sets of cameras and microphones and things to each school for this year for teachers to record lessons and things like that. And I think that's what, is that what Shelley used, Jeff?
Yeah.
That's what Shelley used for the school community council, because we didn't have everyone there. And so it just projected who was in the room, and the microphone allowed whoever was in the room to be heard by who was ever was not there.
Okay.
So they had part there and part not there.
Okay.
I think Dale, you know, I'll just offer, Dale and I will be prepared to lead a discussion on ramifications of that, what, that initiative.
Okay.
And I think that'd be a great discussion for those people to tune in to.
Okay, great.
Will they have everything counted by them, though? I guess it won't matter if we talk about, this is what happens if it passed, this is what happens if it doesn't pass.
Well, what, the election's on Tuesday, and, and we have a meeting on Thursday? I think they'd have the, the questions, ballot questions. You know, I don't, and I, I doubt there's going to be any close races either.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm sure we'd be able to have the data, but we can talk both ways.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Question.
Oh, yeah, question.
Just one thing to point out on that date, is it fifth of November?
Yes.
Parent-teacher conference.
Oh.
Is that day? Oh.
Yeah, okay.
Think that in mind?
Thank you.
Because that is actually a prime opportunity because parent-teacher conferences are going to age at that time.
Oh, so there would be some parents already there?
We're gonna try to do parent-teacher conferences primarily or virtually.
Okay.
A parent that wants to be with the teacher, and we're going to allow it, of course, if the teacher's had the ability and intention with that parent. Of course, we'll accommodate that. But for the most part, those are probably virtual.
Okay.
So are you saying it would not work, or it would work, even with the parent-teacher conference?
It could still work, because we could invite specific parents, like we could ask Jeffrey to come. And he could arrange his parent-teacher conferences around that time.
Right, and I am one of those parents that will be there in person, in my situation.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Okay, let's plan towards the fifth, see what we can work out.
By the way, how impressive is that, that a parent knows that there's parent-teacher conferences on November fifth? I think he deserves some sort of trophy or something.
This guy deserves a trophy.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I, I'm not even sure I know when that's happening on the day of, so I just want to commend you. It's amazing.
And, and I did not pay him to be here tonight.
Awesome.
That is really cool.
It is impressive, and we appreciate you being here, too. Thank you. Okay, so on the other committee report, I thought you might be kind of interested in this, because we've never really talked about the Skyview Rec Center very much. But there was a, a discussion at the last meeting, which was a few weeks ago, on changing some things about the Skyview Rec Center. So let me just kind of give you a little bit of background. Okay, and Dale, you can kind of help me in case I need straightening out here. So we have a joint use agreement with them. And the school, the district, is sixty-five percent, and Smithfield is thirty-five percent use. And so we, as a district, have priority, and then the townspeople can come and use the facilities when it's not in school. So it also works that way with the money. So we put money in each year, sixty-five percent of the total that it's going to be, and Smithfield puts, Smithfield City puts in thirty-five percent. And that's held in a fund which Dale keeps track of. So when emergencies arise, there's money there to take care of things. So Brett Daniels is the director of the Rec Center. And then Mike Monson is the representative from the school. And then the, the, what is he called? The city manager comes to the meeting, who is Craig Giles, is that right? Dale's the financial guy, and I represent the board, and then there's some city members from Smithfield who come and need. And it was proposed, after Brett and Mike had met together, that the agreement be changed so that during rock hour, which citizens have been coming in and using the weightlifting room during that time, could no longer use that room. Because they, when rock hour is over, and the students and the teacher comes in to use the weight room, those folks do not want to leave, because they're not quite done with their workouts. Okay, so that was the, the thing. So after some discussion, it was discovered that Brett really did want the townspeople to be able to come and use it during rock hour. But we talked about how then do you get them to leave when the class comes in? And so what they've kind of decided on is that they're going to let the Smithfield City people come in during rock hour, but they are going to have someone from, some representative, either from the school or from the Rec Center, be there to say, "You have to leave." And then in the meantime, they are going to type up some educational material for the coaches as to what the restrictions are going to be for them, because quite often they want to come in and just use it any time before and after school, when it's really not their time. So they're kind of working out that a little bit. And both sides seem to be happy about how that was going to work out. And I know that after I got out into the parking lot, some of the Smithfield citizens were really concerned about the school taking over and kicking them out, and they'd already solved this problem, and they wanted to make sure that the city had their rights. But I feel like it's going to work, don't you, Dale, from what was discussed? So that's the update on that.
We've had, how many years, Dale? When did it start?
Like twenty years or something. It's been quite a while.
So, and we've had absolute, uh, great relationships, and we'll continue to do that. These little things can be worked out. And the agreement is such that we can't kick them out anyway, so, and, and that's as it should be. So those board members who might not know, they, they contributed money to build extra buildings on when we were remodeling Skyview. And so we have additional space that we never would have had, that we used during the school day. And then they get to use our space when our kids are not using the building. So it's a, it's a beautiful governmental relationship, and, and it will, it just needs to be pointed out that we're going to continue to have that kind of relationship. And, and if we have to, we'll read word by word what the agreement says, but I think we can make, make it work.
Okay, thanks.
I don't think, I know we can make it work.
All righty. Okay, moving on to the board minute. Okay, so we decided we would each take a turn and just write a little short message of appreciation to our teachers each month from the board. So there's the schedule. If somebody wants to change or not do it, just let me know, and we'll work something else out. And it doesn't have to be long. It can be two or three sentences, just something in recognition of the teachers. And then if you just send it to Jenda, she will send it out to all of the employees.
When, when in the month does it need to be? The first of the month, or do?
What do you think, Jenda?
I think the system was by December. I don't remember.
I, mine was kind of in the middle of the month, so.
Okay, by the fifteenth or so, okay.
So let's say have it anywhere between the first and the fifteenth, when it's your turn. So there's that schedule. And then at this, if you happen to be going to your community councils, that's just a little handout for the new chairman, so they can see what their responsibilities are. And then there's just a little guideline on the bottom to show them how to pass a motion, which is probably the only thing they really need to know about Robert's rules, pretty much, is just how do you pass a motion and vote on it? Okay? Any questions on either of those things? Okay, all right, Superintendent.
Well, I really shared with you what I wanted to share, that is, we are having discussions with veteran teachers of like eighteen years and nine years. And they're just absolutely saying there's never, they've never experienced anything like this, even the first year of their teaching. It's how much more difficult this situation has, has been. And I think it's because there's, I mean, there's multiple reasons, but we will, we are just trying to, to think of anything that we can take off the plates. Any way that we can let them know with monetary, like teachers have always covered for everybody. We had, what, Mike, Tim, you were down there today, six positions at Ridgeline, we couldn't get a substitute? Yeah, so no substitute. So teachers are not only doing theirs, but they're going into additional classrooms. That's always been done. But it's, it's just an extra burden this year, and there are less people who want to come into the schools because they just, they just don't want to be put in that situation that our teachers are operating in. And, and so we're trying to create more substitutes, but we are looking at all kinds of things. And, and we will be doing things that are, we wouldn't do in a normal year to try and just figure out how to compensate them for extra time and effort. And, and we'll, we'll, I'll be approaching each of you individually to talk about what we can do as far as finishing up negotiations for the, the money that we would, could put into salaries. And, and I think we'll do it earlier this year, just to try and let them know that this is coming now. And, and we, well, have three professional days. We're going to pay in November, is that? So we're trying to do every. So, we're trying to do everything we can, but it's just, it's just a really tough year.
Are, are you trying to not maybe do as many professional development days and let them have more time at their schools?
Well, I told the principals a week ago or two weeks ago, I said, any meeting that is not at a required meeting or something that you can not put on a memo, just don't have it, just let the teachers have their time in their classrooms. So, we, yeah, we're trying to do everything we can to lighten the load and give them just time to be in their school, classroom. The forty-five minutes might not be enough. We might come and say we need to do something. But you need to also understand that the secondary is operating differently than the elementaries are and the elementaries, we really have had very limited cases. Junior high, I don't think any cases yet. So, if you take and give more time to the secondary teachers, the elementary teachers are giving up time that they would like to have to meet the goal of reading and, and numeracy. So, it's, it's, it's really a difficult scenario to work through, so, but we do know that the system, if we come to you, it's going to be for an individual class or an individual school. We, I don't see any scenario that would, we would come to you and say, let's move this whole thing to, because we were in long enough now that we, if it goes at this level, it's hard, but we can make it, so.
I, I just know that when I was teaching, there was never enough time for preparations then, when that was just a normal, so anytime that you can give a teacher time in their classroom to work on things is probably the greatest gift.
Yeah.
That you can give them.
I understand that.
Really? Okay, anybody have anything else? All right, thank you, everyone. Appreciate all of the individual reports and I'll get these written down, so we can start working them into our schedule. I just want to let you know that we will have elections for a new president at the beginning of January, so I will be in charge for four more meetings and then somebody else will. So, if anybody is really looking forward to having this job, please let me know.
I don't know about you, but that was a quick two years for me.
We could, if we have four more meetings, we could change the policy.
And I also think if we're going to do that, we need to have a presidential debate. If you don't mind.
Thank you, everyone. You're awesome. Appreciate it so much. The meeting is adjourned.